Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, February 11th, 2015 Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Raymond. The Board will come to order. The Board does have a quorum. We'll start with the overall.
Bill Priest.
Greg Foster.
Robert O'Neil.
Bruce Stanford.
Steve Linn.
Benjamin Crowder.
And joining us this evening is Mary Custigan, our county attorney, Jim Seymour, our planner, Chris Hansen from Code Enforcement, and Danielle Loring was taking our minutes. This is a public proceeding and unless the Board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said. And to look at all of the exhibits that are presented, please notify the Chairman if you are unable to hear or to see. The Board works from a public's agenda and we'll be considering tonight's items in the following order. The first will be the review of the minutes from the January 14th meeting, then the town of Fry Island application, some plan of communications for some previously approved projects, and then we will adjourn. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinances. After the Board votes, on the merits of each project application, it will prepare a written notice of decision because the notice of decision may substantially affect any appeal rights. And also, as a matter of courtesy, the Board asks that those attending the meeting with regard to a specific project not leave until the Board has completed its discussion on the project. Generally speaking, appeals from adverse decisions must be filed with the appropriate Appeals Board of Superior Court as otherwise provided by law within 30 days of this Board's decision. Also, to be certain that you preserve your individual rights to file any such appeal, you must be certain that this Board records evidence of your appearance this evening in opposition. All persons speaking, including representatives of the applicant and members of the public, are asked to stand, state their name, address, and affiliation with the project. You must sign a sign-in sheet if you are speaking for or against a project, and please do so from the podium. All persons speaking shall address the Chairman. First up is the minutes for the January 14th meeting. I guess it'll be on page seven. Halfway down the page, it says, we got to one of our votes, it says motion carried, then it was a four-two vote. It's gotta be one or the other. I'm sorry. Unan- I'm sorry, it's further down, it says unanimous approval.
Oh.
Four to two.
Okay.
Now, I have a question about approval. I came in late and I can attest to the minutes after 7:10, but not before 7:10. Does that mean I should abstain, or am I free to vote for approval?
Mary?
(laughing).
I probably should abstain.
I think you can either qualify your voter abstaining, but I imagine that would be enough to move it forward without you. We'd like to abstain.
So do we, you have to make a motion to change that from unanimous to motion carried?
No, we'll just, it's just a, we'll just, yeah, recommend approval of minutes with the changes noted. Is there anything else that anybody asks? Move we accept amendments as amended?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining, or?
Abstaining, yeah.
Okay. Next up is our Town of Fry Island. We need a motion to move it off the table when it gets submitted, reopen the application.
Go move to bring it off the table for discussion.
Seconds?
Seconds.
All those in favor? Motion carried. So the only thing what we have, the only thing we have really left in the discussion is that spot, is the, what we're going to be considering that access. Do you have your thing with you?
I do.
Would you, your plot there? Thanks, Mark.
Yes, should I introduce myself?
Yes, please.
Yes, my name is Mark Gray and I'm with GM Civil and Structural Engineering. And I've been the name of the Town of Fry Islands to represent them with their ferry landing terminal improvement project. I don't believe there's any more introduction required.
I don't think so.
No?
Jim, do you have anything that, to add that was left off from the last meeting?
The Board had asked a legal opinion from Mary, which you have been given. And so if you have any questions with that, I requested you ask her directly. The only other item that we did receive from the applicant was a letter requesting the extended approval. That was, in the previous application, that was also requested. And we've given you suggestions, if the project should approve, we've given you suggestions to treat that as a separate line item.
Okay.
For approval for the Board to consider. And we've given you a recommendation of accepting that approval to match concurrently with the D P approval.
A question on that, that gives them five years to actually begin construction or finish construction, or what's the timeline?
Uh, they would, hold on. They would get, they would get two years to start the project. The Planning Board, we would recommend that the Planning Board extend the terms of residence to two years, then completion to five years. And then they can apply for one renewal on top of that.
Okay.
So it kinda corresponds with the D P, three years, three years to start, seven years to complete is what the D P's typical is now.
That's an awfully long construction schedule.
It is. I think they're more or less looking for the two years to start, just because I think they've got some finances and some things to deal through the municipality before they could start, given the construction season, when we start. Probably it's not gonna happen in 2015, probably it's gonna happen in 2016. So they're just looking for that extended approval. They're not requesting the extension, the first extension, obviously they gotta come back and ask for that extension. So they're asking for two years right now. Am I correct?
Okay, let's, you okay? All right, so let's go to Mary and, do you want to address individual, I think it better than go through me. Why don't we just, why don't we just fire up the individual questions that we've had? Anyone wanna start, or do you want me to summarize them? Jeez, everyone's quiet. Okay, so Mary, this question's what? Oh, go ahead.
Well, I had a question about her letter because I, I don't think the issue, from at least from my view, had anything to do with egress. It had to do with the entrance. And the ordinance says 300 feet from the center line of the lot's driveway entrance.
Right, that's the entrance of the lot, that's the entrance of the, says driveway entrance of that lot, and that lot that they're referring to is the ferry lot.
Okay.
So that's Ferry Road.
But what I'm saying, the egress doesn't really come into it. The point was that originally, there was not a road there. The egress road wasn't there, it was, it was a sidewalk. And then because of the ordinance, they changed it to a road.
Correct.
Okay?
The driveway entrance.
And so, the original question was, is that circumventing the intent of the ordinance? Okay? That was the first question. And I think the opinion was it wasn't, but, okay? And, but it clearly was, in my view, if that's what they did, okay? So now comes the question of the entrance. Well, this new driveway is not, you call it an entrance. I mean, it's there just to satisfy the ordinance, but it now gets into the 300 foot from the Fry Island side.
I guess I'm not, I'm not following the entrance issue. Can you explain to me what, because if, that's not, the language of the ordinance is, off-site parking lot shall be allowed if they are within 300 feet of a lot containing the associated permitted use as measured. And so the lot containing the associated permitted use is the ferry lot, okay?
Correct.
So, 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 off-site, this off-site, off-site parking lot shall be allowed if it is within 300 feet of the lot of the ferry property as measured from the center line of the ferry lot's driveway entrance to the center line of the off-street parking, off-site parking lot.
That's not how, it actually says, the center line of the driveway entrance of the off-site parking lot. That's where we're, I think our issue is. The ordinance I'm reading says the driveway entrance of the off-street parking lot.
That's a typo.
15G six.
Yes.
And that's the thing I'm, I'm struggling with.
Yeah.
Let, let Mary find it first.
Yeah, I find it first.
I'll wait until Mary gets a chance to find the ordinance first.
Thank you.
Age 24 of 70.
Okay. Yeah, I've been looking for it, but, you know, just can't find it.
Right, yeah.
No, that's the wrong, that's.
Number six.
Okay, now I understand your question because I had a typo. I apologize. Okay, so, that lights driveway entrance to the center line of the driveway entrance of the off-street. I mean, and I guess the, then is the question, because it says driveway entrance, traffic has to be going a certain direction then?
Direction is not an issue.
Is that your question?
Direction was, was not an issue. I, I think our issue was-
The language, yeah.
So-
That we're, that we, the project that's presented is presenting a driveway to us that we know is not going to be used, and they know is not going to be used. It's only being presented to us as meeting the requirements of the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
But the ordinance says that it's the entrance driveway, and that is-
Well, it's the driveway entrance.
The driveway entrance.
Right.
And that is not the entrance to the parking lot.
Well, it's the, so, the way I would read it is, so, and it's, it's trying to be specific as to how to measure 300 feet and, and where you measure from. And it's not as, so the center line of the driveway entrance is, okay, the driveway entrance is where the driveway and the road meet, and the center line of that is the center line of the driveway entrance, of the driveway entrance, not the entrance driveway of the lot of the center of that entry. It's just, the driveway entrance is where the driveway meets the road, and the center line of that is-
But what they're getting at is, if, Mark, you can point to the driveway off Corey Cove Road first.
That's the- That's the driveway.
That's the primary entrance into the lot. The other one is an emergency access.
No, I totally, I absolutely understand that. But what I'm saying is, we're measuring from the emergency access driveway. So the driveway entrance of that emergency access driveway is where that driveway meets the road, and the center line of that is where you measure from.
And even though it's a driveway, we're not gonna, that is gonna be varicated and not used?
Well, it's a driveway.
It's a driveway.
It's a driveway, and that driveway entrance is where that driveway and the road meet.
Good question.
I think the ordinance is quite clear. It says the driveway entrance, and the driveway entrance, simply put, is the entrance that motorized vehicles use to enter and exit the parking lot for the purpose of parking. No disrespect meant, but I think that it's tortured logic to say that now we're going to take a pedestrian pathway that was initially vaguely lit so pedestrians didn't stumble off into the woods while they're walking its length, now we're gonna widen it to 12 feet, thicken the gravel, put in 12 feet wide of pavement, gated at both ends. So once every 20 or 30 years, if somebody's picnic basket catches on fire up there, the fire truck can go up there and put it out. That's tortured logic. It doesn't follow the language of the ordinance. And I think if this Board passes that 300-foot rule based on this interpretation, number one, I'm not sure it's legally defensible. And I would think that if an aggrieved citizen group on the other side that didn't like that decision took the town to court, they very well might well, well win. I think what's even more important is that, in my view, the Board has to hold itself to a higher standard. It was these, this Board, right here, is the one that passed that language, and for us to circumvent that language for the convenience of the applicant, I think that puts us down the wrong path. I think it will reflect very poorly on the Board, and I hope we don't do that. I think there are better solutions to the issue, and I just don't think this is the right way to, to be applying tortured logic to solve this problem.
I'll just make one point of clarification.
Go ahead.
I think one interpretation, Bruce, that you're making is that you're calling it the parking, you're thinking of it as the parking lot entrance?
Well, it, just the entrance driveway.
No, that's, well, that's not what it's called.
Not a or an entrance driveway, it's V.
I'm sorry, Bruce, that's not what it's called. It's called, it says the, the driveway entrance, okay? Driveway comes first and then entrance.
The driveway entrance, right.
So it's talking about where we're gonna measure from. And the driveway entrance, it doesn't matter if it's the entrance driveway, the exit driveway, the sometime-used driveway, it's the driveway, and the entrance, the driveway entrance is where the driveway and the road meet.
Well, I understand that.
Because it's for measurement purposes.
But to me, with the word V, it doesn't say a or any, it says V, which means primary.
Well, I imagine most part, a lot of parking lots have to-
Or the one that is used as the way to get into and out of the parking lot, and it's not the emergency access.
So if you had, if you didn't have a gate on that driveway, and you could drive in that driveway anytime, what would be the difference then? The driveway is a driveway, is a driveway. The entrance to the driveway tells you where the driveway begins and, and how you get into the driveway. It's not describing it as a primary or a secondary entrance.
That's tortured lawyer's speech.
Well, I would like, what I'd like to say is, I was thinking about this, you're saying this is a driveway.
Yes, it is.
Then, we actually rejected this project based on the fact, because now if that is a driveway, we now have a four-way intersection. And we rejected the project having a four-way intersection based on safety. So if it's a driveway, we now have a four-way intersection. If it's not a driveway, then it doesn't comply with the ordinance. So, one or the other. And I'm, I'm, I'm with Bruce on this, 'cause if it's a driveway, we have a four-way intersection. This has been my concern all the way along, that, I mean, at some point, those gates can be removed, and now we have a four-way intersection.
I don't understand how you can call it a four-way intersection, though.
Well, if it's a driveway-
Is every residential driveway a four-way, a three-way intersection?
This is a driveway from a parking lot.
I understand that.
That's, we're calling it a driveway from-
We're calling it a driveway, but I'm saying, is a driveway from a single-family residence's home considered a three-way intersection?
Well, we considered the last exit from that parking lot-
But to be a driveway and a four-way intersection.
But we, I, I know, and we had a debate on-
Right.
How that terminology was.
I knew you didn't agree with it, but that's, but, the Board did determine that the placement of the driveway, it, you know, the exit-
If it wasn't fully functioning with the load of traffic that was on it.
Right.
That was part of the issue. Here, you have substantially less traffic on that intersection.
I agree, I understand.
Okay.
So, Mary, but the other question then on this, is that if, if we are, or does the path that was there prior to us moving to the, to the whole driveway, does the path not meet the verbiage of the ordinance, but does it meet the intent of the ordinance by restricting the, or removing the pedestrian traffic from the road? And that's why we put that in there to begin with, is we didn't want the pedestrians walking long distances along the, along, on any road, non-sidewalk road, to their, to their destination. So does the path that would be there vice the driveway meet the intent of the ordinance?
What section are you talking about? The section underneath the off-site parking lot?
The same section, right.
So is, is the technical design of the path meet, I think, the technical design of a path meet the same intent as the design of the emergency driveway?
Correct.
To me, this is almost like the Wizard of Oz. Pay no attention to that pedestrian pathway behind the curtain. We're now going to call it a driveway. It doesn't, it doesn't compute.
I mean, I-
Let, I like, give Mary a chance.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's like, it's also just a bit of a broader discussion, I think, is also necessary as background, which is, what's the, what's the point of the 300-foot distance?
Right.
And the discussion below it, all about pedestrian safety.
Right.
And why shouldn't you have a parking lot off-site across 302? It's all because you want, you don't want pedestrians walking a long distance, and you want them close to where they're going.
Right.
This is serving that purpose from, you know, that, the pedestrians are coming through this driveway. They're not walking down the other driveway that's 700 feet away. They're walking down the driveway that's 300 feet away.
Right, but now if it was not a driveway, and if it was a path, does it, does that still meet the intent of our ordinance? Or it is now, because it's no longer a driveway, does it no longer meet the ordinance?
If it's just a path and not a driveway, it does not meet the, the straight technical language of that ordinance.
Okay, but that brings us back to the possibility of a waiver.
Right.
And I agree with your, your point about pedestrian safety and the 300-foot rule.
Yeah.
Just logically, if it was just a pedestrian pathway, then that's all well and good.
Mm-hmm.
Which is why several of us, can't speak for everybody on the Board, but I know a number of us were more in favor of, of a waiver.
Sure, yeah.
For that reason.
Yeah.
And reverting back to the pedestrian pathway of, of design.
Okay, so now, Chris, in order to get a waiver, what has to be shown? They just have to ask for it.
You have to request a waiver.
Right.
I thought we couldn't waiver, it had to go to the-
Oh, it's the shoreline zone.
So, the-
You're in the shoreline zone.
I thought they had to go to the zoning Board of Appeals, and they had to show hardship here. Hold on just a second. Mary, Mary addressed that in the last meeting.
I, yeah, what, I mean, that's, there's one way you could think about, and that is the fact that this exact requirement is in the land use ordinance and not in the shoreline zoning ordinance. And requirements that are within the shoreline zone that are related to the natural environment and reasons why it's in the shoreline zone, and why those requirements are there, it's difficult to get waivers of those because they're there for reasons other than pedestrian safety and straight things like that.
Right.
Well, the, the 300-foot distance anywhere else in town can be waived. And so, I think it's fair to interpret this as not a shoreline zoning requirement, but a land use requirement, just like in the land use code, and can be waived similarly.
Okay.
You think it is waiverable?
I think it is.
Yeah, I think, I, I'll speak for myself. I, I would much, again, I was in favor of a waiver as well.
Mm-hmm.
I just, the, the idea of, and I expressed it forward, if ever an emergency vehicle was going up and down that with pedestrians there, you're, there is no pedestrian safety at that point.
Right.
It's a much safer situation as just a walkway.
Sure.
The other issue that I brought up at the last meeting, and I phrased it very poorly talking about nuclear bombs, but what I meant to say was, building it as an emergency access 12 feet wide with two feet of gravel and everything else, the genie is out of the box. As Kevin, Kevin pointed out, once it's built that way, at some point in time, somebody is going to be very well tempted to remove the gates at either end and make it a driveway, and now we're right back to an intersection that we already denied on previously.
Right.
And I just think it's just a very bad way to, to go about it.
Do you have any more questions? Greg, you okay?
Right.
Do you think that they could do a waiver out of the land use code, right? Do you want, do you want me to read the waiver provisions of the land use code, or you're familiar with them?
Sure, go ahead. Yes, please.
"The need for a waiver is based on unique circumstances relating to the specific site and development application, and these conditions would not be expected to be encountered elsewhere. The application of the standards is not requisite to public health, safety, and general welfare. The waiver would not qualify for relief granted by the Board of Appeals. The granting of the waiver in other situations would not have the effect of amending the ordinance requirements, and appropriate conditions are implied."
Does the applicant have to formally-
Yes.
Ask for a waiver, or can we move to grant a waiver?
You can't, you have to ask.
We're not-
You just can't grant waivers.
Yeah, that's not currently in front of us right now.
Right.
They haven't made a request. They put this plan forward, we would need to reject this plan, and they would need to come back and ask for a waiver before we could do that.
So, right, so Mark, so my question to you would be, do you want, hey, I think you probably can see where it's going, but-
Forgive me.
It's all right.
Timing.
No, it's me calling.
Tom Andrew Fry Island calling?
Ask for a waiver.
Wait, wait.
It's all right. Would you, since we're not in a position of designing your project for you, but, would you, uh-
Go ahead.
Would you, do you want to vote on, on where we stand right now on this issue before we move forward, or would you like to?
I, I am without my client, sir, tonight.
Right.
I would remind the Board that this, this pedestrian sidewalk and emergency access route isn't, it did have another benefit, and that's that we don't have a large turnaround here. In other words, it wasn't, it isn't strict contrivance.
Right.
It actually serves, and it actually works better for emergency access to get through. So it does have a practical site for it, so I just wanted to point that out. I think that today, we would request that you vote on the application in front of you. And, and then, I mean, the idea that, that at least some of you are predisposed to give a waiver on the previous plan with just a sidewalk and a turnaround here.
Right.
The difficulty is that we have, there's a great deal, it looks like a very simple thing to do, but our stormwater permit is based on this layout, there's an awful lot of expense and time associated with changing it for what arguably is a relatively minor refinement. You know, the concern that has been raised about this driveway becoming a driveway in the future, it isn't permitted that way, it can't be used that way, there are gates in place, the enforcement of, you know, mechanisms are in place. If it were ever to be used as a driveway in the future, in the sense that, that you're bringing it up, it would have to come before the Board. So, I, I, I understand, but I don't, I don't think it's as serious a concern as, as you might think it is. So I would leave, I would just leave you with that.
All right.
Can I ask the applicant one question?
Your stormwater, you had a stormwater permit for the previous design. Is that still not in effect?
No, no, the stormwater permit that I, that we had under the, on the last application that we had, we had a permit for that. This is an amendment to that, but it's based on this.
You didn't have one, you didn't have one for the, just the sidewalk with the hammerhead?
No, 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 no. In fact, I was keeping my powder dry, waiting to see which way the wind was gonna blow before I got that, forgive me, which way you guys were gonna rule. And so, you know, what, once, once we figured that this was going to be the, you know, the scheme that would sell, and we worked out all the details, and it's, it's not insignificant, it's, you know, you know, 30 to 40 man-hours, 'cause it's, it's just the same, only different. All the calculations change, and all the exhibits change, it's just a, and I get paid whether I'm fighting a margin, or I hope to. But I think the, my client would much prefer that you approve this plan.
Can I make just a suggestion to maybe meet in the middle?
Sure.
Which is, leave the design as it is, but put a number of conditions on that will make you feel better about its future use, and also grant a waiver for those who feel that this is, does not meet the intent. I think you can, I don't know if there are enough-
Can we do that? I mean, we're-
Well, yeah, but, 'cause you're, I mean, I think you can, there are two separate things. One is, as designed right now, you don't, some of you, I don't know how many of you, don't believe that it meets the ordinance, and you would deny it, and it would require a waiver. Because regardless of whether it looks like a path or looks like a driveway, it still doesn't meet it, and that 300-foot requirement would have to be waived, according to some of you.
But he has to request the waiver.
Oh, yes, yeah, so I'm just trying to, but, it, there's a way to do it through a waiver, but keep the design the same way if there are conditions that you could place on that driveway that would make you feel comfortable, such as, it shall never be used as a, it shall forever and only be used as an emergency egress, it shall ever and always have gates, it shall ever and always, it's, I, I'm just a suggestion, I don't know if there are enough conditions that would make you feel comfortable, but-
Wouldn't, Steve? One more question for the applicant. Wouldn't it, there's a significant cost savings in just doing a path versus making that, that entire stretch up to our, our street ordinance is-
Well, we were just saying, there's a very significant chunk of pavement in here. It's, it isn't, it isn't much of a savings if you think. This is just slightly more expensive than this, the previous scheme, believe it or not.
About 40 hours' worth?
Now, that's, that's the expense to me. In terms of construction cost, you know, there's, if you remember, this, there was a, was, there was a fairly wide area, 40 feet long, and there was a big T-head with big radio in here.
Hmm.
So there's a big chunk of pavement in here, and we're, we are already paying for, you know, five-foot wide walk. Now we've got a twelve-foot wide walk. When you, when you compare those two, you know, it, this may be slightly more expensive, but it isn't a huge savings. I mean, if that's your question.
That's my question.
Mr. Chair, I, I've heard the concern is that the, the combination of pedestrian and emergency vehicles, but just wanna, you know, for the board's reference, there are many, and I know this isn't.
I don't think that's a concern.
Okay. I thought I heard that from.
Well, I mean, it's a, but yeah, it's not really a concern. I mean, how many times is that gonna?
Right, and I'm just saying that we have many applica-, many circumstances in town now where that happens, where you have emergency fire lanes and pedestrian walkways side by side without curb, so.
So how mad does the fire department get at it, get, if we don't make them do a turnaround?
Well, they have to do a turnaround.
They have to.
They have to do a turnaround or they have to do a through? That's not an option.
Not an option?
That's not an option.
And, and the parking lot itself is not wide enough to qualify for turning around?
No, they wanted a full hammerhead or a through lane as design.
Okay.
Do you want, what's in there now in terms of making, it's, it's two gates, right? We have a gate at the top, gate at the bottom.
Right.
But there's no language to say, I just want to see what that, is some language in there now? Or Mary's suggestion to put language in there?
There is some language in there, but I guess we could probably put more in there.
Stiffen it up, I, I'm out. I think what it boils down to, I mean, based what Mary said, and I, I don't necessarily can agree with her or not, but it's still probably how it's gonna be interpreted by courts if it ever gets there. So I'm inclined now to move to support the project the way it is. But I'd like to see her suggestion that we put some pretty stiff requirements in there so that it forever will not be a dri-, entrance driveway.
What do you suggest there, that's ready?
I think that's accomplished.
Think that language that you just said would be applicable.
Yeah, yeah.
That itself could be almost a motion at this point, or a condition.
What?
What Bill just said.
Oh.
Okay, Steve?
I'd like to see some language in there about absolutely no motorized vehicles, mainly because going way back when, I actually saw a golf cart parking lot back in there and golf.
Absolutely, that's, that's.
Other than for maintenance?
Other than emergency vehicles.
Or maintenance, or maintenance?
Or ma-, or maintenance.
Whoa, maintenance?
Well, what if, they gotta go in and patch something up, or?
Okay, yeah, but I'm, I'm s- thinking more of the residents' motorized vehicles.
Yeah. Right, just for onsite parking lot, maintenance only.
Right.
And emergency vehicles.
And do we need to restrict the use of those maintenance vehicles, you know, that it's only an entrance, um, I forget the name of the roads?
Ferry landing?
Yep, only an entrance from ferry landing because it's, they don't have the site distance to exit that way.
I would think that anybody was doing maintenance out there, you know, it's like doing tree work. You'd have to have cones and things like that if you were doing maintenance at the entrance.
At the entrance, but if you, I just said you, you're talking about driving a truck up to patch something.
Or they could come in the other way. I was just saying that.
Right.
On the, on that section anywhere, whether they come in from the top or the bottom, you know, there may be maintenance vehicles on there from time to time where there a tree falls down and they need to cut.
Oh, no, I'm not complaining about the being maintenance.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying that we know that there's no site distance to exit that driveway. They don't have the site distance to exit that driveway safely.
I, I think the frequency of that would be almost as frequent as the emergency vehicles leaving.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying we need language. I mean, we were talking about language.
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it, personally, I don't think it's necess-, I don't think it's necessary for, to have that for occasional maintenance vehicle on there. If it was regular pedestrian, public traffic, yes.
Is there, does this meet the site distance provi-, provisions?
No. It doesn't meet the site distance provisions. That's why the other one didn't do it.
Right.
It's, it, it's thirty-five mile an hour speed limit and it doesn't have site, site distance.
So I, well, I know we, we didn't look at those other four designs because of the site, but I didn't, I didn't realize this does not have the site either. So an emergency vehicle pulling out of there, it's.
Right, but there are the sirens on and, you know, I mean, it's not.
I mean, you, you could put something on there that says only emergency vehicle shall ex-, shall exit onto the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I think only for, only for the purpose that we know we're approving something that it does not have a site distance.
Right, sure.
We should say something.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep, one more question for Mary.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah.
So the only way we can do this, just, for those of us who don't feel, or that interpret the ordinance the way we're, I'm interpreting it and a few others are.
Yeah.
We would actually have to reject this, uh, project based on the, uh, not complying with G. And then they would come back with a waiver and we could pass the waiver.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't, because we approve it tonight and say, yes, it does, then we've, we've said it complies with the ordinance.
You would have to vote on item G. If item G did not pass, then you'd have to table the application.
Right.
Then they'd come back with a amendment asking for the waiver.
Right, okay.
But you might, you might wanna have the discussion of the, all the conditions.
I think the conditions that we just discussed pretty much puts a cap on it. I mean, that there would be no exit except for emergency vehicles and that forever and always that, that would only be used as an emergency egress and ingress, and that's it. And that, to me, that should satisfy concerns about it becoming a permanent driveway at some point in time.
And we already have the, the gating in there. We already have the knock boxes.
That's right.
In there, right? So it's.
Okay.
And was there anything else in there that?
No, just the, uh, other piece of the motorized vehicles of any type.
Yep, right.
Access for emergency vehicles are maintenance only and no exits, no exit except for emergency vehicles.
That's good. All right, item G is our only item that's outstanding on the project, so I remember correctly.
Yes, that's correct.
I had, got it. So it, the, uh, the path then is, um, we'll, um, we'll have a motion to whether to approve as presented by the applicant. We will either vote up or down for that. Um, if we vote down for that, the path, second path would be for the applicant to request a waiver for the existing design, um, which I'm not, why would we do, why would we be doing that? What, what was the purpose? What, what are we wavering if we're?
The purpose, I think, was.
You're, you're just, you're waiving the three hundred foot distance because if the determination is that the current design does not meet that three hundred foot distance because you don't believe that that, that the driveway entrance is within hu- three hundred feet because the driveway entrance is actually seven hundred feet away.
According to the language of the ordinance.
Okay.
You have to waive it.
We'll waive that, okay, well.
Regardless of how the design is, um, you, you, you don't think it meets the requirement, if, if that's what you think.
And why don't we take it in another order? Are you prepared to ask for a waiver? We normally ask it in writing.
I would, I would prefer to, to have you guys vote on the application as it is.
As is, okay.
Um, and then if it, if it doesn't work, then, you know, we, you haven't, uh, 'cause you're, you would, I assume that what you're gonna do is vote on this particular thing, and then you will vote on the project secondarily.
Correct.
So you'll have an opportunity to table it if you don't make it all the way through, but I would like to think that you would just approve it the way it is.
Okay.
So I'd prefer that you vote tonight. I think my client definitely wants to vote tonight.
Well, I'm not, I'm.
If you can.
I'm not, um, suggesting that we're not gonna vote tonight. I'm just changing the order at which we would vote tonight.
Oh, I see.
So, I'm not sending you away to ask, to have you come back with a waiver.
Sorry.
I'm just asking you to ask for that waiver before we vote on G.
I see. I, I would love to think that I have the authority to do that, but I don't. I think that I would need to consult with my client before I, um, you know, requested a waiver. Is that your question?
Yeah, but you're only requesting a waiver for the three hundred feet.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think he's, there's a misconception. I think he's thinking that the waiver would be to eliminate the design as he has it, and that's not what the waiver is for.
It's not what a waiver is for.
The waiver is to give the board that the primary entrance is more than three hundred feet away. They'd be waiving that requirement that it's three hundred feet away, such that the primary is seven hundred feet away, and then the emergency access would stay the same.
The waiver would allow them to approve it as is.
That's the way I understood it.
So what, so what do you think for me to request that waiver? Can I request that waiver verbally?
Yes, that's the way I understood it. Well, normally we would say no, but because we've sent you away so many times, and we've actually asked you to come up with that particular drawing based upon previous discussions.
Right.
I think the board would be willing to accept your verbal request for a waiver.
Then, then, then we do request that waiver.
And you do have the authority. You have some sort of piece of paper that sends it.
Still got that phone on?
Check your phone.
First question you're supposed to ask.
I, I, I misunderstood the waiver. I thought the waiver was to not only waive the three hundred foot rule, but also as a condition of the waiver to have the pedestrian pathway revert back to a true pedestrian pathway with the turnaround, which.
No, well, now that, they can do that if the project fails as presented. That would be their option. But this waiver would only apply to the three hundred foot.
All right, and if we don't feel that the emergency access design meets the intent of the ordinance, as a personal board member view would be, then I would vote to deny the entire application based on that.
Correct.
Irregardless, or regardless of the outcome of the waiver vote.
Or, and, and/or vote no on item G.
Right, because I don't feel it means, okay.
But what, can I just, clarification, what intent of the ordinance, are you talking about the three hundred feet?
The definition of the entrance driveway.
Right, but that's what the waiver's for.
We're not, so we're not damaging the ordinance.
Right.
If in fact you voted no on G and yes for the waiver.
Right.
The ordinance stands. We still require three hundred feet, but for this project, we may, we want a single exception due to extenuating circumstances.
Right. You can vote no on G, grant a waiver, and still approve the whole project.
Yep. Or the other way around.
Because the waiver cures the failure of G.
In which case he has to come back with the redesign?
No, because you're gonna put all the conditions on the road, the, on that emergency road, so.
No, no.
Or I can vote no on G and no on the whole application.
Yes.
Yes, you can, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I just think the word "the" is, defines the whole thing.
All right, so we got to go, and I'm gonna, uh, make a motion that we accept the applicant's waiver for, um, item G, recognizing, wavering the three hundred foot requirement from, um.
Be two votes, I think.
The entrance.
Don't we need to vote for it as it is before we vote on a waiver or not?
No, we just need to go the opposite order.
That seems backwards to me.
Well.
And one other item of protocol, I think we need to have a vote to revote on item G, 'cause right now, last time it was three-three, item G, so I think you have to vote to reconsider G again.
Could we get, vote for the waiver first and then do G?
If we.
Can they do that?
My point was.
Yeah, well, let me, I, I, yes, because the thing is, is that you're only waiving the three hundred foot part of G.
Right.
Um, there are other things.
We are not waiving.
In G that you're not waiving.
Right.
So you want to approve the waiver first and then vote on G.
Right.
With the waiver of the three hundred feet. So with the waiver of the three hundred feet and everything else, it meets G.
Would they voted last time three-three on G, do they have to vote to reconsider G again?
Might as well.
I'm just, protocol, it's all.
Yeah, and it's the, someone on the winning, well, it was tied, so anybody can.
All right.
Move to reconsider.
So your first item is the waiver.
All right, no, first item is now reconsidering.
Yeah, reconsider G.
So I move that we reconsider item G, um, yep, reconsider item G parking areas. Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Motion passes. All right, we're reconsidering G. I make a move that we accept the applicant's, uh, request for a waiver for the three hundred foot, um, requirements, um, distance requirements noted in item G six, I think it is. Item G six. Item G paragraph six.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go.
Can we get some assurance of getting that waiver in writing within a certain time period, so we do have it, rather than just your verbal?
The request.
Right, or restful, I would like, I think we need to have a request for waiver, let's say within.
With proof of written within.
Five business days or whatever, then. Okay.
To catch.
Yes.
I, I can't support it because it, uh, wavering the three hundred foot rule in this case means we're accepting the logic of the emergency access being called the entrance driveway, and that runs counter to the ordinance. I just cannot support that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? I think we've been seconded, is it, was there a second?
I seconded.
Right. All those in favor? Opposed. Two, five, one, motion carries. All right, so I didn't move that we accept, uh, that the applicant's, uh, the application as presented by the applicant meets the requirements of item G considering the waiver approval of the waiver.
Do you wanna make that subject to the additional conditions of approval? We talked about the restrictions on the driveway.
Yes. Um.
I'm drafting, try to draft something as we speak.
Well, I mean, we, we've already put it out there. I don't know, I think we know what the restrictions were.
Restrictions are.
So, may it move to approve item G with conditions of approval that the driveway only be, only and always be used as an emergency access with only access and exit for emergency vehicles or maintenance and exit only for emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the three.
Would, would that go in here or would it go in conditions on the entire project?
Conditions on the entire.
It would go in on the site plan approval.
Well, conditions on the entire project, yeah.
Okay, so the, the, so CEO has, um.
Yeah, the, yes.
Authority.
Yes.
Absolutely, we still need to vote for it here.
Okay, actually, I like your motion. I'll second Ben's motion.
What's happening? They, that condition will be on the end of the other ones I've recommended.
Yes, it's going on.
It's on, it's on this motion, yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Just trying to keep track.
Is there gonna be a time for public comment on this?
There is not. All right, um.
Do you need a second?
We need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
You already seconded.
I seconded.
It's okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Five, one. G is good. And that's it. Okay, we are down to the overall projects. Now we need a motion for that with all of the, um.
You need for site plan and shoreline zoning pools, the overall, the overall.
The, right, we did the overall, right. With the conditions of approval.
I'll move that we accept the applicant's application with the conditions for approval. Anything else you need to add?
Um, probably you would add, um, as noted in the planner's menus, items one through eleven, I think we're up to?
Yes.
Can I just say some more?
You can say that. And you are drafting?
Yeah, I'll get the tape and we'll, we'll make, we'll formalize the condition on the findings of fact addressed by Ben.
Okay.
You'll have to amend item three. Says keep the driveway clear. Which one are you talking about? Are you talking about all of them?
The emergency.
Okay.
I will, that, that is.
Mark, you have seen, and you're okay with the conditions of approval?
I have seen, but they're all reasonable. In fact, most of them are, were even taken care of and nothing that aren't.
Some are, yeah, some are.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question. Item, item nine kind of already assumes we've granted their request for.
Yes, and this has to do with, uh, the bonding.
Right, I understand that, but I.
You know, if, by just, I, the question, the problem that we have is that the bonding doesn't necessarily go with the extension of approval.
Well, why wouldn't we put this as a, a condition of the extension of approval, rather than put it in here? I just, I just seem to.
It, it's gonna get caught either way. We wanted this specific language in there.
But if we, let's, but let's say we didn't approve the extension. This kind of assumes it.
Right, right.
So we put a qualifying statement in there if, if the.
Yeah.
Extension is.
Okay.
Yep, we can do that. So captured.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
And then item twelve would be, Mark has to attend every planning board meeting for a year.
Does he get time served?
I don't know if it's for good behavior or not.
Is there more, any more discussion? Bruce, do you want to, uh... You know? Anyone else? It seems kind of anticlimactic, really, all this time. I just don't want to do it, Mark.
Just hold your nose and work at it.
All right, all those in favor of approving the Fry Island parking lot application? All the posts?
Thanks, Steve, and these are what I, you know...
Motion passes, five one.
At the next meeting, we'll do the extensive findings of fact for this one.
Okay.
And then you'll have an opportunity to again review the conditions and the wording. I don't think you're planning on starting anytime immediately, correct? Not with four feet of snow.
All right, so then, the, while we're still on the project, though, the next item to reconsider it is the proposed, the proposed file and landing improvements would be the extension that has been submitted separately.
Oh, don't go away yet.
We're still working on it, we have one more to go.
I have a question on this extension. You're saying, we're saying now they can go two years to start, five years to complete. If they come back for a second extension to go to four years to start, does that five year to completion get pushed out as well? It was unclear.
It gets extended out two years as well.
So we go from, we go to four and seven?
Correct. But only if they request the extension.
And they had, and for the, that second extension has to go back here?
All you are granting, all you are granting is the two and the five.
Right.
If they want to get the extension, they have to come back
Have to come back for another...
For requests in writing.
I want to check back with the staff if that came back to the planning board.
I think they would come back to the planning board.
Do we?
Yeah, come back to the planning board. That's why I'm saying...
Sure, go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead and push the button.
Oh, it's good. No, the, the reason for the request is that, that the town of Fry Island is a seasonal community and it take, it would take them longer to make the kinds of decisions that they need to make in order to spend. This is a significant expenditure for them and this was just the first step. You know, once, once they have, they find out what the cost is, it has to go, go through the municipal process of funding and so on and so forth, and that may take more than another municipality would take. So, once, once they decide to build this, this isn't going to be dragged out any more than any other construction project would. It would be, it would be designed and prosecuted to completion.
Okay. I mean, I, I can see, because of the reason, I can see a delay or granting an extension before commencement, for, before it starts, but I certainly can't see three years to build a parking lot. So, that certainly seems to be an exorbitant amount of, yeah, time.
No, I think what they're really looking to do is protect the approval.
Right. For a period, for a period of time.
And the, all reason I chose that was it just mimicked the DEP approval.
I, I understand that, but, but ordinance has changed and, you know, things, things change and the board is going to change and we may not want to lock in for that long a period of time. I mean, if we leave it as is, they still have the option for an extension.
Correct, commence, to commence.
So right now, they have...
They have to commence before they complete.
So right now, they've got twelve and three, right? Isn't that, or twelve?
No, twelve and twenty-four months.
Twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay, and we can go any, so...
We could go two and three, we could go two and four, two and five, it's all a two.
So we go two, so we go two and three and then they can still have the option of coming back and asking an extension from them.
Correct.
Okay, that...
So, you're, the reason for the extension is more
Two and five.
getting ready to build, so you're concerned about the three years of building, you're more, you want the two years to plan?
Well, if you think, if, if it takes them, say, say for example, they decide at the end of this summer to go ahead with the project, they've also got to come up with, with construction documents for the improvements to caper. So those have to be developed and then, then the whole thing has, then you've got the whole procurement process and then once, once they have those numbers back, you know, they may need to make another decision. So, it's really, there's, there's quite a bit more involved before they actually say, okay, let's spend the money and hire the contractors and set them going. Once, once they pull the trigger and say, let's build, let's build this thing, it's going to go together in, you know, a couple of months.
Right, that's what, that's what they can go to.
I, I would move that we grant an extension of total of three years with two years for commencement.
That's right, I'll second that.
But definitely about completion.
Is there anything else? More discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? No, extensions, passes, two, three, Mark.
So, what was the, I'm sorry, we were talking, what was the, what were the terms?
Sorry.
Two, three.
Two, three.
Yeah, I think that's all you can do, but I've just
Well, no.
We disagree, I think you can only do two and thirty anyway. Yeah, so this is the, it says the, uh...
Well, no, what they're saying is that they're going to give you two years to...
No, 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 so it says unless...
And really they want you to give them one more year to complete. Three, two. CEO will start on year two.
So you're giving them two and one?
Yes.
Right, right, two and one.
Oh, so three total.
Right, three total.
That's what I was, you and I were, we were doing the same thing, but different math.
Gotcha, we're saying different way.
Different math, yeah.
All right, now you can go.
Two and one is three.
Yes, that's, that's...
So, and two and three is five.
Exactly.
All right, so as I find the agenda...
You said two and five, you meant two and three.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mary. You can hang around or come again. All right, next up is our consideration of finding effects for the Panther Run Marina. Has anything?
Panther Run was a staff review site plan application. It was for an eighteen by thirty addition. And I don't know, did you guys, you have it in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Very small addition. Had to do a little bit of stormwater improvement for the imperviousness of the roof. And they did that with a bio retention cell on site. And they met the actual phosphorus calculations for that and staff approved that. This was staff review.
I know, it just sounds, what was the marina that, the other marina we just did?
Port Harbor.
Port Harbor, yep. Oh, yeah, this one was off of County Road, not Roosevelt Trail, sorry. Very straightforward, very small addition, however, it did trip into staff review and as such, we've addressed all the issues. The only thing of substance was, again, the surface water drainage. Everything else was the same. They will update the landscaping that they're knocking out and very simple application. Again, that was just for reference and the other one that I was involved with, do you want to move on to the next one?
Yes, please.
Uh, was the one you passed last week, which you will have the, to sign the findings of fact for Meyer Realty Investments, the marketplace comments. So take your time, read through that, I think we captured everything. The plan has been addressed, it added the striping for the pedestrian way. We had that revised, the numbers for the stormwater calculations and the fifty points was met. The trees, preservation of landscaping, the guidelines were met. Again, not a extremely difficult, the only issue with that would have been the surface water drainage, which is a little bit of a change from the original, but met the point system. And you'll have to sign that this evening. The two conditions on the plan, again, were the summation of the fifty points and the indication of the three foot width for the pedestrian walking area. Those are on the plans that you'll have to sign this evening. Answer any questions? And I think the other one you have was prepared by Will Hasko, I don't know if I had that one. And the other one you had was for the Raymond Public Works salt and sand shed. The conditions. Two conditions, provide additional operation, maintenance, housekeeping procedures or additional physical controls to minimize the conveyance of sand and salt to the infiltration areas. Provide catalog cuts for the building mounted site lighting features, and I believe those have been submitted. So again, just the findings of fact you need to sign this evening and plans here as well.
Bob has a Sharpie.
Say a Sharpie somewhere.
Uh, Bob has it.
Self a Sharpie.
There's two sets, there's two different plans here, so you can sign one and you can start signing another one.
No.
Saves time.
So no March meeting?
Don't do it in red.
Mr. Chair?
No, I don't think you do it in red.
Mr. Chair? And at this time, there's no other applications expected for March?
Until March?
No, not until March.
Oh, not until, not for March, no.
Oh, and the select board accepted your ordinances last night, so they'll be on the warrant.
Okay.
So we'll, unless you want to come in here and go over the findings of fact for Fry Island, we can put those off to later.
Let's put them up to later.
I don't think they're in any...
They don't care, I was just thinking, they have...
Right. No, we'll prepare them early and get them to the client to review.
Right.
But we can send them out in advance and any comments you can bring back to the, to Danielle.
We don't send the paper.
No, you do.
You do.
All right, while we're signing, we can probably be voting at the same time. Second.
About what? What are we voting for?
Just raise your hand. All those in favor? Don't return.